Evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Please be seated. All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Ms. Bushrod, do we have any public comment this evening? All right. Okay. So when you come to the podium, please state your name, your relation to the school division, the election district in which you reside, and we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone the opportunity to speak. So first, we have Brady O'Donnell.
I'm going to have to fight with the mic this time. How are you guys doing today?
Good, thanks.
My name is Brady O'Donnell. I am a resident of Trigger Lane, so not technically part of the school district, but I am here to talk to you guys about the addendum and hopefully a variance request for the children that reside on Trigger Lane. I do have some letters, if I could bring them over for you all just. I usually don't need a mic. So when I came to speak with you guys a couple of weeks ago about my request, I brought some information about the, I think it's the JEC addendum to the admissions policy. I did get a little bit more information from the last time I was here, so I wanted to share some facts with you guys that I had found out. The question had been asked about our taxes, the taxes that we do pay as residents on Trigger Lane. Our real estate taxes do go to Westmoreland County, but talking to many of my neighbors, I haven't personally gotten my personal property taxes yet, but all of our vehicles are registered in King George County, so we do pay personal property taxes. And when I registered my vehicle with a new address, it's registered in King George County. So that does, there are taxes that are paid to King George, from my understanding. Again, I have not personally gotten that information in, but from some of my neighbors and speaking to them, I did go around and talk to them about what we were trying to achieve and did have a lot of support, both from parents of school-aged children and also neighbors that had been in that community for quite some time and remembered when both King George and Westmoreland County school buses came through the area. So I think that's it. If you guys have anything else, but I appreciate you taking the time to discuss the policy and I hope that you consider removing the addendum and considering a variance for the kids on Trigger Lane. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Mr. Vance, do we have anyone online? All right. Anyone else in the audience that was here for public comment that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, we will move on to changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to propose an agenda item to be included. The topic of the agenda item is recruitment incentive for public education, RPE funds.
Okay, how about we add that? If we make that our first discussion item this evening, would that be, would everyone be amenable to that? Okay. All right, we will do that. Okay. So on our consent agenda this evening, for consideration, our minutes from the July 25th, 2022 regular meeting, I did note a change that I wanted to comment on. I guess, Ms. Bushrod, you're here with us this evening. So the minutes, page five, there's a comment about, in Mr. Rolls's board comments section about a request to discuss books that had been read, and I wanted to correct that it was Mr. Rolls that requested that, not Dr. Boyd. So unless there are further comments, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
A motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next, this evening, for our action items. First up, we have the Dairy Alliance Grant. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair. If you remember last school board meeting, we requested that we accept the $4,563 from the Dairy Alliance Grant. This grant will cover the cost of a three-spout milk dispenser for the high school, which will hold two five-gallon bags of chocolate milk and one five-gallon bag of white milk. The recommendation from the superintendent is to approve the grant in the amount of $4,563.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Dairy Alliance Grant for $4,563.
I'll second it. Oh, go ahead.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next, for consideration this evening, on our action item list, we have policy manual updates. We have policy, most of, first of all, are there any requests to remove any of those from the action item list this evening? All right, so for consideration, we have policy CBCA, disclosure statement required of superintendent; policy CF, school building administration; policy EBBB, personnel training, viral infections; policy EEAC, school bus safety program; policy GBI, staff gifts and solicitation; policy IEC, Bill of Rights of the Constitution of the United States; policy IGAH, family life education; policy IGBB, programs for gifted students; policy IGDA, student organizations; and policy KGA, sales and solicitations in schools. Do we have a motion to approve the action item, policy manual updates as presented?
I move that we approve the policy items as presented. Policy CBCA, CF, EBBB, EEAC, GBI, IEC, IGAH, IGBB, IGDA, and KGA.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Just a question. Dr. Boyd, in the one IEC, the Bill of Rights of the Constitution of the United States, it says it's going to be posted in a conspicuous place in each school for all the students to read. I'm just curious as to, will that be when they walk in the door, you think? Or is it still not decided?
It's usually in the main office of each school building.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's all right. Just, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And our next action item is our superintendent qualifications that we established at our meeting last Tuesday, following our public hearing. So I distributed to each of my colleagues the revised version of the announcement from BSBA, so made a couple of changes. The current budget was, amount was updated to 54.7 to reflect the current operating budget that has been approved for FY '23. And a change was also made to the areas of expertise to delete a, two sentences that were, I think, a carryover typo from a previous template. So the intent after, the conclusion of this evening would be for us to prove this, and I will give VSBA the go-ahead, and it will post, I believe, tomorrow morning. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the application, what do we call this?
Announcement of.
Announcement of the superintendent application search.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. Lost my agenda.
Madam Chair, excuse me, you're going to be giving this to the VSBA tomorrow, is that right?
Yeah, I'm going to email them after this meeting tonight. All right, moving on to our discussion items. So we've added to the discussion item, we will start with the agenda item for the recruitment incentive for public education. Dr. Boyd?
Sure. The topic again is the recruitment incentive for public education. A little background about that. The 2001 special session, number two of the General Assembly appropriated ESER state funds that were set aside to support recruitment efforts of school divisions difficult to hire positions. And those positions had to be hired between August 15th and November 15th, and if they were and they met the qualifications, eligible teachers would receive an incentive award of $5,000. The recommendation of the superintendent would be for the school board this evening to approve, or excuse me, discuss, I believe, the approval of the recruitment incentive for public education grant in the amount of $25,000.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Are there any questions?
Yeah, when it said, these are for positions that are difficult to fill, is that correct?
Yes, so positions that would be hired between August 15th and November 15th, by nature, they would be difficult to fill.
Okay. So this is all positions because of the timing? All right.
Between that, between that small window of time.
I understand.
All right, Dr. Boyd, was there a time-sensitive nature to us approving this recommendation this evening?
If we could do it tonight? Yes.
Okay. All right. I would be willing to entertain a motion if my colleagues were.
I move that we approve the recruitment incentive for public education, Ripe, in the amount of $25,000.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next this evening, we have the FY, sorry, policy JECA, addendum to school admission policy, JEC. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, the request of the board, following last school meeting, we, you asked to have a copy of the addendum to school policy JEC, which I've included in your board packet. With the help of Ms. Bushrod, we've also gone back and taken a look at the minutes in which this policy was created, that is also in your board packet. So if you turn to the page following the policy JETA, you will see special meeting minutes from August 22nd, 2008. About halfway down the page, you'll see the initial conversation on Trigger Lane. Turn that page, you'll see a meeting, excuse me, it continues on the next page. Following that meeting, they meet again on September 10th, and they have a discussion on the creation of policy JEC addendum, which is about two-thirds down the page. This was a discussion item at that point, and then the final meeting discussing this policy was September 24th, 2008, where you see, again, two-thirds down the page, a motion to approve the addendum to policy JEC. Certainly, I'll go into that in greater detail if you'd like, but all of the verbiage is there from the meeting. There's, most of the dialogue is in that first meeting.
Okay, certainly. So I wouldn't mind a deeper dive if you have additional information to share on the history of this, or.
Sure, would you like me to? All right, wonderful. All right, so again, this is August 22nd, 2008, and I'll just go through this quick paragraph. The conversation was individuals living on Trigger Lane, school-aged students on Trigger Lane, in which school division they should attend, and it begins with a school board member, Mr. Paulson, presented the history of Trigger Lane, starting that on January 22nd. There was a discussion between King George and Westmoreland Commissioner of Revenues in reference to tax-collecting purposes. On January 23rd, there was a joint meeting between Westmoreland County and King George County Board of Supervisors to discuss establishing the county boundary line. Boundary lines were established in the records in 1770, and the particular boundary line in question was established in 1778. New survey was then completed, updated boundary lines were established, and unanimous approval by boards at that time were given, which created the boundary line. On August 19th, there was correspondence from King George County Administrator to the Dr. Brown Superintendent at the time, requesting an update of any progress between the two school divisions, two school divisions being Westmoreland and King George, as to the impact of school attendance for the new boundary line. On August 22nd, Dr. Brown responded to Mr. Dennis Kearns, who was the county administrator at the time. No official action was taken at that meeting. However, Dr. Brown did start a dialogue with the Westmoreland Superintendent. On November 5th, correspondents to the county administrator from Dr. Brown found that there were two students previously enrolled in King George County schools. There were no students attending King George County schools who resided in the affected boundary line areas. There were also, there was also dialogue between the Westmoreland Superintendent, who said they would allow students who resided in the affected areas designated in King George County to attend Westmoreland schools if they desired with no tuition cost. Mr. Paulson stated that he went through all of the information and that one of the things he found interesting in the joint meeting that took place between Westmoreland and King George County, he said that Mr. Henson, who was on the Westmoreland County Board of Supervisors, mentioned in his statement that both boards had an obligation to the taxpayers in both counties. He also said that Mr. Henson stated that it did not matter what grade a child was in, if the resident was impacted by the boundary line, the child should be able to attend whatever school division he or she attended. He further stated that the, that in implementing this change, perhaps consideration should be given to a one- or two-year grace period in 2008. Mr. Paulson stated that it was never given, nor was the grace period or the grandfathering clause for the boundary change ever formally acted upon. He said it looked at the meeting, he said, in looking at the meeting of the minutes in the supervisor, excuse me, he said, in looking at the, in the meeting minutes, the supervisors unanimously agreed to the boundary markings and comments and agreements that were made during that session. He said there was never any action to put together a plan, a grandfathering clause or a grace period for those families at Trigger Lane. The school board discussed the above information at length with Dr. Brown, was asked to contact the superintendent of Westmoreland and develop a plan. The following motions were made. Motion by Ms. Parker moved to waive policy BDDE rules of order for the purposes of reconsideration of the request for students on Trigger Lane to attend King George County schools. Mr. Kilborn seconded. Ms. Parker, Ms. Kilborn, and Mr. Paulson voted a, and Mr. Alawine and Ms. Parity voted nay. The motion passed. Second motion that evening was Ms. Parker moved to allow students residing on Trigger Lane currently attending King George High School to maintain registration in King George, at King George High School through graduation, and further allowed students residing on Trigger Lane currently attending King George Middle School and Elementary Schools to attend those schools for the remainder of the 2008, 2009 school year. Mr. Kilborn seconded, Ms. Parker, Mr. Kilborn, and Mr. Paulson voted a, Mr. Alawine, Mr. Parity voted nay. The motion passed. That's the conclusion of that conversation from the initial school board meeting. On September 10th, they met again, again, moving down to two-thirds through the page. The policy JEC addendum was discussed. Dr. Brown stated, at the last meeting, the board indicated they wanted this in writing and recorded it somewhere. She stated, after reviewing the policy manual, she is suggesting that they add this as an addendum to policy JEC, school admission. The school board discussed the language and context of the amendment, of the addendum, and asked that Mr. Britton review this policy. This is to be returned at the next meeting. In the final meeting that they discussed this policy was September 24th, 2008, again, two-thirds down the page. The discussion, this was, they mentioned again that it was discussed at the September 10th meeting. There was a motion made that evening, Ms. Parker moved to approve the addendum, policy JEC addendum. Mr. Kilborn seconded, Ms. Parker, Ms. Parity, Mr. Kilborn, and Mr. Paulson voted a, Ms. Alawine voted nay, and the motion passed. Can you go over the policy if you need me to?
Oh, um.
Certainly stands.
You mean, just the copy of the one that's in here?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we've probably reviewed it, don't necessarily need you to reread it to us, unless you feel so compelled. Okay, so is there, do we have any other additional supplemental information, or that's where we are right now?
That's where we are right now, yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Boyd?
Discussion slash questions? Okay. Just looking at both sides of it, what, what would we consider as a board, and also, Dr. Boyd, your opinion on this? If we were to, say, accept or change this JEC addendum and allow the students that live on Trigger Lane to attend King George County schools, what are the positives and what are the negatives?
Okay, so just to attend, no discussion of tuition or anything?
Well, yeah, put, that might be in a positive or a negative, yeah.
Okay. So again, I think in looking at the history, there was a conversation to begin with about tax revenue and whether or not you paid taxes in the county. So I think we would certainly be opening a conversation to that in our community, not only with Trigger Lane, but other surrounding areas that would be of, in the same geographic position as Trigger Lane is in. Right now, our average estimated per people expenditure in the school division is about, is just north of $11,000. And I caution everybody, that's an average. Those costs can waver pretty mightily. Some of them over $100,000 to spend, depending on certain situations with students in the school division. There's, there's certain consideration about, I guess, as I mentioned, the geographic areas, and then really, how, you know, where that natural cutoff would be if we considered Trigger Lane, and how we would make sure that we were inclusive of certain students that were out of county, and then make sure that we also created that barrier that we could defend at some point.
Understood.
So it sounds like you could say, I hear you saying a couple of things. One is that it would obviously open the door to everybody that's on Trigger Lane, whether it's, I know that we have nine letters, I think, here. I heard in past meetings, possibly 14 people, I don't know where that came from, but looking at somewhere nine to 15 people on Trigger Lane, whatever, we don't know what the exact number would be. So it definitely would impact those students coming in. Obviously, a tuition concern is a possible negative, because the minimum would be a little over $11,000, depending on the needs of the student. It could be even over $100,000, because there's, who knows? I see that as one, sort of a negative. But then also, I heard you say something else, which is interesting, and that is possibly that other streets that are right on the border, it might open all of that up.
Possibly, yes, sir. That's correct.
So that would be a negative, depending on how many other streets, especially on the border. Now, Trigger Lane, I know, is right on that border, so we're not sure of how many other streets, and you don't necessarily need to answer this, but I'm assuming there are probably some other streets that are right on the border also?
I think, yes.
I'm assuming that, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Okay, let's go to the positives for a minute. Well, I want to ask another question. In terms of taxes, if we were to do something like this, and I'm not necessarily recommending it at this point, I'm just, it's an if question. If we were to do something like this and somehow allow this to happen, would there be some negative consequences with the Westmoreland County? I know we'd have to have a discussion with them, but is, because the taxes wouldn't change, they're still going to pay taxes in Westmoreland County. But would that be a problem with Westmoreland County or with the school? You may not be able to.
I think they're still going to pay taxes in Westmoreland County. You know, one benefit is that we, you know, with every additional student we have, we receive extra state funding. We would receive that state funding for that student that would be a Westmoreland student.
Right.
So that could be a detriment for Westmoreland slightly.
Correct.
When they're expecting a student to come to their school division.
So that'd be a negative for them and a small positive for us. Although, again, if we're talking about a small number, it's not that significant. But if we opened the door, it could be 30 or 40, we don't know, because there may be other streets that are leaving, listening to this, that are thinking, oh, if that's going to pass, we might come. Okay, but still, it would be probably not a tax-negative consequence to Westmoreland, because that's not going to change. It would be a possible negative consequence for those few students, but probably more dependent on the number. If it was small, it'd be so minor, it would be manageable. Obviously, 30 or 40, we're starting to get into some significant numbers. Okay, I'm trying to think of other negatives and positives to this. I guess I'm asking the rest of the board.
I guess I have some other points, maybe.
Sure, go ahead.
Like, we can, we can continue the conversation. I guess, Ms. Hawk, do you have any comments or discussion?
Yes, and I have thought seriously about this, because I was present for this discussion by the previous board and spoke with Dr. Brown Superintendent at the time several times regarding consequences and personal impact on the various families. She was very concerned, as was Mr. Paulson at the time, and Ms. Parker, that we present a consistent front, a consistent decision, since we're dealing with, I believe, the 1770 date was the original date of that. And I do know that, I do know that the board spent a lot of time working on this, and Dr. Brown and the Superintendent of Westmoreland spent a lot of time working out this decision. And I'll be honest, I'm very reluctant to have us as a board changing decisions of boards that came previous to us.
Right, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutwright?
This is a comment. I've worked at school divisions that have accepted students outside the school divisions with tuition, which would be a possibility. I'm not saying that I recommend that at all, but one question I have for Dr. Boyd would be, what would be the impact of having students in King George County schools as far as classrooms? Classroom capacity is what I'm talking about.
Sure. Right now, we are up 84 students from last school year. So we do have some school buildings right now that are approaching their maximum capacity as far as capacity versus current enrollment. I will, I will also say too, we have, our policy JEC, without the addendum, just policy JEC, mentions right now that in bold print up above, it says that we do not take tuition students, which I believe there's a few other things that would have to be considered as far as our policy manual, if the change was considered.
So there would be a major impact in classrooms instruction? Thank you.
Sorry, you said there would be or there wouldn't be?
Would be.
Would be, okay.
So, Dr. Boyd, so I guess I got a couple of things. So, and I think, right, if we were to, if we were to consider, you know, if we were to begin considering, looking at what changing this would mean, I think, obviously, there are a lot of implications that go beyond this board room with us in it, right? So from a county perspective and all those sorts of things. So I guess I am, I find, if in fact, personal property taxes are paid to King George and real estate property taxes are paid to Westmoreland, that seems like a weird consistency, inconsistency, and not something that we would be dealing with. But I guess I would like to have that conversation, find out from the Board of Supervisors how that is and why that is, like, that seems like something that doesn't make a lot of sense. And then, I don't know if you have an idea, but would you be able to just, again, I'm not saying that we are going to go down this path or will, but I think in order to inform the conversation, I also am hesitant to change decisions of boards in the past, but I would be interested in knowing what, how many, how many of these instances do we have with our county, like, our county lines? Like, how many random of these, you know, one-off situations do we have? And how many students does that affect? You think that's something we could?
Yes. The question I would ask is, what is the criteria that we are looking at as far as, I mean, are we talking about a road that goes in and out of our county? Are we talking, how wide is this? Are we looking for one to two miles outside of our county border, or?
Well, so, I guess when, like, so this case sounds like right there in a weird position, because their addresses are King George, they pay some taxes to Westmoreland, so that puts them in a weird, weird gray zone that needs a decision, right? Where, which school do you go to? I would be interested in, are there other areas of the county that fall, that have some weird exception like that? Not, not like in, you know, a, you know, a transition zone where people can decide which county they go to school? I guess I don't mean that, but just if there are other instances like this, right? So if this was revisited, are, how many other families in the county would come and say, hey, I also have this weird exception, could you revisit my case too? Does that make sense? Is there a way for us to find that out?
I can make an educated guess, but it would be hard, you know. I don't know if we'll know those families and those situations. I don't know if we'll know those families and those situations until they come forward to us.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Okay, makes sense.
Like Dr. Cutwright, I have experience also in districts slash divisions that I've been part of where they did allow students from other districts or divisions to come to ours. And there was a charge and there was a communication between us and the district they were coming from. And there also was consideration of space. All those things were there, but we did do that. In fact, one of, I won't go into any more than that, just to say that, you know, that was done. And it was done pretty effectively and we weren't the only district. In fact, all the school districts I've been part of, except this one, did that. Now, I know I come from another part of the country, but it's still something that, I guess if we were to make this change, I almost am hesitant to do it because of Trigger Lane. I'd almost want us to look at, okay, what are all the positive negatives? Because if we have the space and if we put the tuition charge at such a level based on past history, yes, you're going to have a few of those that are going to be significantly, you know, a detriment to the cost that it might be. And, but you're going to have kind of an average amount. And I guess if we had the room and if we had permission of the other, the districts or divisions they were coming from, and if we could come up with some type of tuition that would be ecumenical based on history, my opinion would be, why not? If we don't, now it would have to almost be a first come, we did a first come, first served. I mean, we didn't just open the doors for everybody. We looked at applications, one and then two and so on. But I'm just, I'm sorry, we came from a district that did that and it was pretty successful, in fact, from all of them. So I don't know if anybody else has experienced, I'm just saying this was my experience and it was very positive.
I would foresee challenges with things like space in the buildings and all those sorts of things, right?
Yeah, those would be considered, absolutely.
My memory is, at the time, and I have not gone back to look at, it's on, you know. Okay, my memory is that the boards struggled with this very seriously and looked at everything from special ed needs to frankly, at the time, we were dealing with some out of country students as well. Yes, well, students who had moved here as immigrant status. And it was, it was a real serious impact, yes, but trying, trying to look ahead and seeing, well, is our county going to expand in this direction? Because we'll need the classroom space for these students as opposed to those students. They went back and forth and they, they spent a lot of time on this. I know, because I was part of it with Dr. Brown. I would like to be able to include all students who want to come to King George, but I don't think it's a wise policy to change at this point in time.
I've got some more numbers too. We, I crunched a little bit of this information this morning. Right now, as we go into the school year, our total enrollment is going to be 4,528. Our, all of our, the capacity of all of our school buildings is 5,300. And our growth rate is about one point, you know, between one and a half to 2% a year. So that starts to get us pretty close right now to reaching capacity within, you know, roughly five years. So it's, that's certainly a concern.
Yeah, you're right. That's a good point. Thank you.
The other, the other aspect that they took into consideration at the time, and this is very relevant in my memory, is that the county could well incur far greater expenditures to go out than tuition would be to come in depending on the needs of the students. And we can't predict what needs those students are going to have, especially if they're young students, young children. So if we get five years into this, six years into this, and we get into serious expenditures of any type, I think we will, we will perhaps need to remind ourselves that we looked at this and that we accepted those expenditures.
Excuse me, are there any other divisions in our area or even in the state of Virginia who do this, who do accept tuition from other divisions?
Yes.
Who there are?
Yes, there are.
There any that are nearby us or similar to us?
I'd have to take a look. I know Richmond County, my former school division does.
Orange County? Thank you, thank you. I guess I'd be curious if there is other divisions our size, and I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Hawk, but at the same time, you know, I'm coming from the side that I think all the things you're concerned with can be worked out and there's, I think, more advantages and disadvantages. But I'd really be curious to, the other divisions that are near our size that maybe do this.
So my only caution with that, I, I think that's, that would be, is a good piece of information to have, although even if a division is the same size as us, that doesn't mean that the, that they're building capacity, that all of those things can be entirely different from our, from our division. So I think that's, anyway, I, I tend to think that in this particular case, a conversation with the Board of Supervisors to understand more about that particular case and like, that's a weird, like, I know I'm personally going to, I think, call, you know, follow up with some of them and find out more about this, right? Like, I don't know if that could be revisited just for, seems like long-term, right? Like getting to the root of the problem would be some sort of, having it addressed at the county level, right? Like get that straightened out so everyone pays taxes in the right county? Would seem to me to make the most sense. So we didn't have to make these strange decisions, right? Based on inconsistencies from a taxation standpoint. That's not really an action or a conclusion or resolution to the issue. Those are my thoughts.
So are we saying that we're going to gather a little bit more information on how because of school you're starting? However, you know, even if we were to make a decision, positive or negative, within a few weeks, they still might want to make the change, but that's another, that's another discussion. But I would still like to gather more information even for the future.
I agree, I agree.
Yes, Madam Chair, so at this point, I'll take a look at other school divisions, particularly the ones that surround us and see what their tuition policy may be. Also follow up with Board of Supervisors to see if there's something unique about the property taxes, real estate tax situation. And then some of the other points you mentioned on how we consider, Mr. Bush, about how you consider a criteria for admitting students into others, into our school division.
And then maybe in reference to this particular issue, maybe a phone, just a phone call to the Superintendent of Westmoreland, not that, tell him that we're only discussing this. I don't want him to get the idea we're going to do this. But I think he may or may not be aware that this is under discussion, but it would be a pretty big deal to him. So I think just maybe alerting him that we're having the discussion out of respect.
Yes, sir.
And if he has any comments, of course.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the FY22 budget. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, you have a revised cover sheet in your board packet for this topic. So again, the background for this is the Fund 250 of the School Division's annual operating budget. So again, this is our entire operating budget outside of any grant allocation received. Fund 250 of the School Division's annual operating budget is divided into categories. As we've seen before, those categories are instruction, technology, administration, health and attendance, transportation, operations and maintenance, and finally, facilities. At the end of each fiscal year, this is typically an administrative practice that takes place. Final transfers between six categories within Fund 250 are rectified. This is something relatively new for the board. In the past, this has always taken place, this is an administrative task. But following the last audit, it was recommended by the auditors that the board approve any, any fund reconciliation in the Fund 250 prior to the, to the audit for this coming year. So Superintendent's recommendation is to approve the budget transfer and budget amendments as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Can you walk us through some of this? I was looking at this, I think I follow, I guess, what going on, but like, can you give us an example? If you start with maybe the first one on page two?
Yes, Sherry's here and she is our expert and she'd be happy to help us with that.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, so for Department Code 611, which is our instruction, we're going to take from positive lines and we're going to transfer them into lines that are in the negatives.
Okay.
All of the Fund 250. Same thing with the second page. We're just taking from the positive because we need each one of these to be positive categories.
So if I were to look at, say, just the ones on page two, for example? So you're saying the budget transfer from and those four salary categories, those are, those are, those are, I guess, like line items or program IDs at this point in time?
Yeah, those are all fund balance that are sitting there.
And so those are, okay, so those are positive. And then the ones that below that, that are the budget transfer to, those are negative at this point in time and that's going to reconcile the difference?
Yep, and I included extra funds in each one of these lines because we have until August 26 to do any FY22 spending. And I just didn't want to have to come back and have you guys do it again. So I included extra in each line to cover any expenditures.
Okay, sorry, you said you have until when?
August 26.
August 26, okay. So any discussion questions from the board? Actually, I have another question.
Sure.
Sorry, so page four, that one looks a little bit different. That has like credits, the grant, I guess the grant balances, so.
That's the one you're supposed to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That explains it, got it. Okay, so, so from a time sensitive standpoint, when, I know this is on discussion this evening, is bringing it back at the next meeting, amendable, acceptable from a time?
Yeah.
Standpoint?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, any further?
Yeah, if we had any questions, I guess we just go to you, Dr. Boyd.
Certainly.
Throughout the week or whatever. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, that concludes our discussion items, I believe. Actually, I'm going to, I have something I just wanted to bring back. If we could revisit the Superintendent announcement, I know we just approved it, but I did note based on that conversation, so we've listed our pre-K through 12 student enrollment as approximately 4,200 students. It sounds like that's not actually accurate right now. It should be closer to 45 something. Is that true, Dr. Boyd?
What I pulled today, yes. Where was that number?
Even if we said approximately 4,500?
28, 4,528, I think is what I said.
So we said.
Again, this is before, you know, we're rolling into the new school year, so we typically have some adjustments that are made right at the beginning, no-shows and things of that nature that come on. So that number will adjust slightly.
Okay, so it's listed in here as an approximate number anyway, so perhaps I could change it to 4,500. That might be more accurate. Are there any objections?
I agree.
Okay, I will, I'll make, I'll have VSB make that final change.
We need to make a motion to adjourn.
Certainly, we could do that.
Motion that we amend the announcement of the Superintendent's search qualifications and concerning the student enrollment to read approximately 4,500 students.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, what's aye, motion carries. All right, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to committee reports. Mr. Bush, do you have any committee reports?
No.
Ms. Hawk?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Cutwright?
Ma'am.
Nor do I. All right, Dr. Boyd, over to you for the Superintendent's report.
Just real quickly, we had a great in-service week last week. It was wonderful, a lot of positive energy in the school buildings right now, a lot of good things happening. I want to thank all board members that were able to attend. Our opening convocation was a success. A lot of positive energy in that room as well. Today was the last day of summer and we start school tomorrow. So we are excited to see all 4,528 students show up tomorrow and keep pushing that positive energy through the school year. So it's an exciting time. It's like Christmas.
Certainly, sure was. Okay, thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right, moving on to our board comment. Mr. Bush?
First of all, yeah, I really enjoyed the invocation, the beginning of school meeting that was, and especially your concept of the goose, the geese flying. I think that was wonderful. You did an outstanding job with that and the speaker was good. And I do appreciate the energy that was clearly there by all the teachers. It was really good to see that. I sat with some of the high school teachers and was happily, was surprised, not surprised, excited to see their excitement for beginning the school year. And I even sat at lunch with five or six other teachers and asked them, you know, what's their biggest, what are they looking forward to the most and what are they looking forward to the least? And of course, the most was just to see the students again. I love that passion. And the least had to do with things that we're dealing with, so that was nice to hear too.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
I want to say a very special thank you to Dr. Boyd. After, after hearing some of the stories that happened in our surrounding counties and hospitalizations and et cetera, et cetera, my daughter having experienced that as well, as well as some other families, it was a wonderful day. And it really did bring us back to a fee, a feeling of some normalcy. The educators were excited, they were wearing their shirts, they were applauding the newcomers, the professionals who were coming in. The feeling was, was perhaps not like Christmas, but was exciting. And I think it just, it was, it was a delightful lunch, delicious lunch. And I want to thank the ladies and gentlemen who went into producing that, even getting past the pig there. That was interesting to see, but the food was delicious and the conversation was fun and upbeat and realistic. Everybody is not wearing rosy colored glasses, but it's a positive and we're ready to take on challenges. And that's what I heard from all the, the counselors were working very hard last week, very hard, as were the bus drivers. All of our folks have really put in an incredible effort. I spoke with Mr. Day yesterday afternoon and he was tired, but he was ready to take on the challenge. So lots of thank yous to all of our staff and especially to you, Dr. Boyd. We had no hospitalizations as far as I know.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to wish everyone a successful school year. Research shows that parental involvement improves student achievement. And I'd like to say to the parents that they can help out in the schools as a parent volunteer, they can communicate with teachers and they can be involved with their child's schoolwork. And if parents have questions about their child's education, they can communicate with their child's teacher, counselor or principal. And if you have a question, and if you've noticed this week or last week, you can contact King George County Schools and ask the Superintendent a question. And he gives weekly videos and they're posted to answer questions that parents might have. And I found those, Dr. Boyd, to be very helpful as well. I'd like to conclude to say that we have this year lots of new staff members as well as new administrators. And please join us in congratulating Ms. Billy Tig as a new Assistant Principal at Potomac Elementary School. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Cutwright. All right, I'll, yeah, I'll sound a bit like a broken record, but I also want to say thank you, Dr. Boyd, for the convocation on Friday. That was an awesome experience. I was super excited. I'd heard a lot about it, so it was a lot of fun to sit through that. Possibly the excitement, I don't know if it was elevated from years past since it was a couple of years since the last one, but I thought it was great. I particularly liked Rodney Robinson, is that his name, I think, right? That's the speaker, I thought he was, he, I thought his, what he had to share about the, you know, teaching in the Juvenile Detention Center in Richmond, I just, I loved all of it. I thought the whole thing, I thought it was great, including Gail realizing the pig was real. Anyway, so I hope everyone is properly excited about school starting tomorrow. I know my kids are. I did also want to say, Dr. Boyd, I know your videos are appreciated and certainly directed a couple of folks to them with some questions, so I think that's great. And lastly, I did, I did think of the, your, your, your sense of a goose, I think, the other day when I was running down the road and some car honked at me, which if anyone runs, it's really annoying. And I was like, you could only honk if you're a goose. And it wasn't a goose, it was a truck, so nevertheless. Anyway, so I hope everyone has a great, a great year this year. I know a lot of work's gone into it, so very exciting. That is all I have. So at that, this point in time, we can go into closed session if there is a motion.
So at the state code section, 2.0 Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2, 37.11.1A1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, resignations and substitutes of employees of the school board.
Do we have a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we're now in closed session.
Hi, how's everybody doing? Let her eat my pizza. Okay, I could have that longer, but I wanted to hear this meeting during closed session right now. How's everyone? I hope you guys go for a walk down the pond, this should be more business. And then we can do your hair after this is over and she's done her business. Don't forget to pack your lunch. You can use a black, I mean a brown paper lunch bag. There's some of the nap. Happy sit. Happy sit.
Turn to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second and third certify?
Dr. Cutright, do you certify? I certify as well. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, we're now in open session. Do we have a motion to accept personnel as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept personnel as accepted.
As presented?
As presented, thank you.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are now adjourned.